For you.
Called to order this meeting, the October meeting of the Ellsworth City Council to order, October fifteenth, two thousand and eighteen, all councilors are present. Item two, Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Item three, Rules of Order. We run the meeting according to Robert's Rules of Order and any other rules and procedures that were put into place at the organizational meeting last November. Also at this time, anyone that has any phones, pagers, any electronic devices, if you can turn them off, please, or put them to silent, I'd appreciate it. Item four, Adoption of Minutes from the following meeting of the Ellsworth City Council, September seventeenth, two thousand and eighteen, regular monthly meeting.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Motion in the second, all those in favor? Unanimous? Item five, City Managers Reports.
Yes, as you all know, on November sixth is Election Day. Polls here at City Hall and at other polling locations will be open from eight AM in the morning till eight PM at night. You can vote absentee. Absentee requests must be received by the municipal clerk by close of business on Thursday, November first, unless there are special circumstances, and if you believe you have special circumstances, I would refer you to the city clerk to clarify that. Construction or paving for the year has wrapped up. We recently did Winkin Paw Road and Branch Pond Road and Fairground Road are now all complete, and we'll hit it back again in the spring for the rest of the work program. I would also note, next week, the boat launch out at Green Lake is going to be extended. The concrete timbers, or planks as they're called, are going to go out some additional distance so that when the water is down, as it typically is in the fall, you can more easily get your boats in and out without bottoming out. So that is good news for those who use Green Lake Boat Launch. Trunk or Treat is coming up on Wednesday, October thirty-first. The three to five will be Trick or Treat downtown. They will be lining up for a parade at five, and the parade will begin at five fifteen. The Trunk or Treat takes place in the City Hall parking lot following the parade. And I believe, oh, Nilton Park and Harbor Park have been closed for the season, so if you're looking for the splash pad this weekend, it's not going to be there.
Yeah.
So otherwise, that's the items Mr. Chair for this evening.
Thank you, sir, appreciate it. Item six, Committee Reports. Any, okay, I won't even ask the question, I see the hand goes up.
I'm so eager.
Counselor Hamilton.
So I attended the Harbor Commission meeting. The fuel sales were up over the previous month, and I think that was indicative of the entire season, it was a very strong season. There was a donation from Storage Plus, and that donation was used to purchase an accessible picnic table, which has certainly made the park a little more accessible for people. It was a very nice donation. The ice eaters that we have purchased have been installed. Remind everybody, these are, really what it's doing is circulating the water, and it will circulate the water, it'll be turned on before it gets cold, but it will keep the water from freezing around the pylons, which we ran into problems, had to make some expensive repairs, so this should prevent that problem from happening again. The new tanks, that process is still underway, still being scoped, to be able to replace the current fuel tanks, so that will be a project that will continue to move forward. And I believe that's...
Just one additional comment. The harbor this year has generated just under twenty-nine thousand dollars in revenue coming into the city, which is, I think, the best ever. And if they get the gas tanks in with diesel, they expect that to increase somewhat.
Hey, Mr. Chairman. Recreation Commission met last week, had a full agenda, had a quorum there, so we got some business done. We've set the basketball court closing, and sound curtains are coming down either the twenty-seventh or the twenty-eighth, and the courts will then be locked for the season. We set the, tentatively, the second Saturday in February as the winter carnival weekend. We're going to get a lot of participation from other groups this year, it appears, so it may be a full weekend of fun and games. And the most tremendous discussion, the YMCA for a fee of three thousand dollars has asked that they take care of the ice skating rink this year. So Gary doesn't have to snow blow it all winter long. Some of us are going to go up and show them how it works and teach them the snow blower, and they're going to take care of it, so it's a big relief for a few of us that spent a lot of days up there snowballing.
And nights.
Yep, and that's about it, other than Demai Field closing is going to be the last week of October, as soon as the travel soccer and everything is off it. The YMCA is part of their use agreement, will be closing that facility down. Our staff will take care of contacting the plumbers to get it winterized and all that, so we'll take the flag down and pack it until next spring. Thank you.
Sounds good, thank you. Any other councilors? Seeing none, move on. Item seven, Citizens Comments. We set this time aside, if anyone would like to come up to the podium and tell us about, well, whatever's on their mind, there will be no action taken since it's not an agenda item, but if you're someone inclined, please come up, tell us who you are, and let us know.
And that should be in front of you, moving up. That's for our broadcast.
Like there?
Thank you.
Good evening, council members, Manager Cole, and members of the community. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
My name is Julia Ventresco. I'm an Ellsworth resident, small business owner, and member of the Ellsworth Green Plan Subcommittee on Waste Reduction and Renewable Energy. Thankfully, we are also known by the shorter name of the Ellsworth Green Action Team. I am here tonight to invite and encourage you to attend the upcoming Taking Care of Business Panel Discussion, being hosted by the Ellsworth Area Chamber of Commerce and the City of Ellsworth. The topic of discussion will be the draft single-use carryout plastic bag ordinance proposed by the Ellsworth Green Action Team. The panel will consist of representatives from the Retail Association of Maine, the Penn Bay Chamber of Commerce, and I will be on the panel representing the Ellsworth Green Action Team. The event, which is free and open to the public, will take place on October eighteenth from eight to nine-thirty AM in the City Hall Auditorium. As I mentioned, we will be discussing the draft ordinance, the intent of which is to prohibit the distribution of single-use carryout plastic bags in Ellsworth and encourage the use of reusable shopping bags. So why ban plastic bags, you might be asking? In short, because the problems with single-use plastic bags far outweigh any convenience gained by their use. They clog our storm drains, litter our streets and green spaces, jam recycling equipment, and fill up our landfills. Also, and most concerning, is that plastic bags never biodegrade, but they do break down into tiny, toxic particles called microplastics, which then enter our environment, polluting our groundwater, oceans, and wildlife, and eventually ending up in our bodies. As you may know, fifteen towns and cities in Maine have adopted successful policies that significantly reduce the number of single-use plastic bags in their communities, including nearby communities of Blue Hill and Belfast. And similar efforts are underway in the towns of Bar Harbor, Mount Desert, Southwest Harbor, and Tremont. It is our hope that Ellsworth will be next, will be the next forward-thinking community and the first city in Hancock County. Maybe it's the only one, but it will be the first city in Hancock County to adopt such a policy. In doing so, Ellsworth would be setting an example for other communities in our region and taking a step towards mitigating the increasing problem of toxic plastic pollution in our oceans, groundwater, wildlife, and in our bodies. We hope to see you at the October eighteenth event. Your input and guidance and support are an important part of this process and will be welcomed as we move forward with this effort. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Do you have any questions?
Counselor.
I just, and I sent this to you in email, I would just encourage, if you can, to schedule other forums at different times. The eight to nine-thirty isn't going to be convenient for everybody, and so to have more stakeholder involvement would be very beneficial.
Yes, I completely agree, and it was out of our hands, as this is a Chamber-sponsored event, and we were invited to it. We did not arrange it. And I do have some flyers, and I know you all should have gotten my email, but I will have these available for the public as a reminder. Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, it'd be great if a counselor was able to be there just to listen. I have to be in Augusta for MMA conference.
I'll be there.
Okay, good.
And, Mr. Chair, I'll be attending as well.
You can bring the coffee. Anyone else for the public speaking, the citizens' comments tonight, please?
Probably doesn't come as a huge surprise that I'm back again. Rebecca Maddox Wilber, and I'm here to speak about the Tyconic Firehouse Community Building, thrift shop, what the different names it's been known by over the years. I thought, as a teacher, I might do a little subject lesson, and the lesson is on history and why it's important, and I think the reason I'm here tonight demonstrates why history is important. Because in nineteen eighty-six, the whole discussion of the future of the thrift shop came up, the community building, Tyconic. I'll go with Tyconic, Firehouse. The city, it came before the council, and it took about three years to hash that all over, and the determination was made that that building should be saved. But in two thousand and four, it came up again, and came out in an RFP, and the city decided, yes, in fact, we would like it saved, but we don't want to save it, we'd like to find someone else who would. And so that was done, and Weber won the proposal, and there is a written agreement stating that they would preserve the building. And it also says in the agreement that if there was ever any attempt to change of use of that building, that it would come before the council. Yet Weber was able to obtain a demolition permit, and of course, you all know that the hearing is next week, that we have appealed that, but the ironic thing is, the way it was laid out historically was that that would not come to anyone but the council, and that it was already agreed upon that it would be saved and preserved by Weber, which they have not done, and in fact, have in their hands a demolition permit. So the history lesson here is, history is really important, and it's particularly important in city government, because when we elect leaders to represent us, to make decisions based on our wishes as community members, we should not have to return every ten, twelve, fourteen, fifteen, however many years, and argue what was supposedly put to rest many years ago. So this is going to come before the appeals committee next week, on the twenty-second, and they're going to make a decision. I don't really understand that process entirely, but what I do understand is that is not the route that they should have even been allowed to take. The decision was made in two thousand and five, they agreed that they would preserve. They also agreed, and it is stated, that if at any time that they wanted to do something different on that property, they are in good financial standing and would provide other land to move it to. Yet they were granted a demolition permit. So my question is, as a citizen, who's paid not only my taxes, but my other family members' taxes here, and lived here my entire life, who can I trust as a representative to take care of the business that is agreed upon in this city? Because the way I see it, it doesn't matter who's sitting in the council's seats, the council makes a decision, that stands, that is standing for all time. That's supposed to be part of our history in decision-making. We should not be having this discussion. People were entrusted to do that job, the job was done, the decisions were made, yet five hundred-ish of us have had to take it upon ourselves to fight for something that was decided twice in history. That's a concern to me. So my question to the City of Ellsworth is, if in fact, council people are our representatives, and we come and we make pleas, and they make decisions, and agreements are made and signed, what recourse do we as citizens have when those are not honored? Because I pay a lot for the privilege of living here, and I have been here every single time this has come up, with my little toddlers, my teenagers, and now my grown kids sign the petitions themselves. I don't think that I should have to be back here again. So the question is, who is going to keep the history of the decisions of the city council to make sure that citizens don't have to run out and try to prove what I know happened, what was signed to years ago? That's the one thing. And the other thing is, when do the rights of people who decide something's not important mean more than the rights of people who decided a long time ago that it was important? That's all I have to say. Thank you. Any questions?
Item eight, Presentation of Awards. Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, if we could still go on?
Oh, yeah, yeah. Sorry, John.
Somebody else come back as well.
John Mayon. I stand before you tonight with a little bit of fear and trepidation because I'm a city employee. Over three weeks ago, I sent a Freedom of Information request to the city requesting a copy of the city manager's current employment contract. As of tonight, I have not heard back from the city. State law says I'll be notified within five days of my request, and will be given an estimate of the time request it will take. Secondly, state law request says that if it's denied, I'll be notified within five days of my request. As I stated earlier, I have not heard anything back from the city. In talking to my attorney, I've decided I should come before the council, and hopefully they can find some resolution to the stonewall going on before we have to proceed to the next step, which is Superior Court. I have chosen to live in Ellsworth and have been heavily involved in city activities, volunteering countless hours over the years. As much as what I've already told you bothers me, what I'm going to say next bothers me more than you will know. It gives me heartburn and many sleepless nights wondering now when I walk into City Hall if I'm walking into a hostile environment. I thought when I filed my request, only a small number of people would know about it, myself and maybe two or three people at City Hall that had to do the process. I did not tell anyone when I filed the request. Unfortunately for me, that did not stay confidential. I was asked by a city employee, who I don't think should have known about this, and who was also a good friend of the city manager's, if I had filed the request. I told him, yes, I sent it on my home email, and it was nobody's business but mine. I was shocked and upset. I asked him how he knew, and he told me the city manager told him. I told him to go back and tell Mr. Cole that I'll be expecting that. I think this shows a serious lack of judgment from people's parts. In closing, there is no specific timeframe for the city to fill my request, the law says within a reasonable period of time. I have signed city manager's contract sitting on the council where you sit tonight. I have a rhetorical question, because I know this isn't a question-and-answer period. Please ask yourself, I was waiting over three weeks for that document that you've seen for a reasonable period of time. Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Good evening, my name is Judy Blood, I live in Ellsworth Falls. I happen to live right next door to the Tyconic Firehouse. And I bring before the council tonight minutes dated from nineteen eighty-six, December fifteenth, an offer of twenty thousand dollars was received from Weber Oil Company to purchase the Ellsworth Falls Community House. They would demolish the building and upgrade their station on the adjoining lot. The city manager had been advised that their offer is approximately fifty percent of the true market value of nineteen eighty-six, and for that reason, as well as for public sentiment, he recommended the council reject the offer. On motion by Spring, seconded by McCormick, it was unanimously resolved to reject the offer from the Exxon Corporation to purchase and demolish the Ellsworth Falls Community House. And again, in nineteen eighty-nine, September, Exxon Corporation has made a proposal to the city that they are willing to provide the funding to move the Ellsworth Falls Community House back approximately fifteen feet onto a foundation. This would provide a better site distance for the minimart, which is located in that vicinity. Since this is a historical building, Lawrence King, chairman of the Historical Preservation Commission, has been contacted by Exxon officials with regard to moving the building. Mr. King reported that the property will have to be surveyed to establish the lines, and an agreement with the budding property owners, my grandparents, would have to be worked out to determine if the building can be moved without going to the Board of Appeals for a variance. Then specifications will have to be drawn out and the project put out to bid. Mr. King volunteered to handle the bidding process as chairman of the Historic Preservation Commission. It was suggested that a full basement might be better than a four-foot frost wall, but there was some doubt that Exxon would go along with the expenditure. It's also a very wet area, and a full basement would probably not be usable. On motion by Spring, seconded by Rossborough, it was unanimously resolved to authorize the city manager to negotiate an agreement with Exxon or Weber Corporation regarding the Ellsworth Falls Community House. I have not been able to get a copy of that agreement yet, but history does repeat itself. I thank you.
Thank you very much, Judy. Is there anyone else? Seeing none, move on to item eight, Presentation of Awards. There were two awards this evening, both of those people are unable to make it, so we're going to put it on hold tonight. Unfinished business, the Consent Agenda, item nine. All items with an asterisk are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member saw a request, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. Council Order Number One Zero One Eight Zero Zero, Request of the Finance Director for Transfer of the Defendant's In rem Criminal Forfeiture Docket Number CR-Dash-17-Dash-1123 to the City of Ellsworth and to allow the Finance Director to deposit these monies into the Police Forfeiture Reserve Account upon receipt of the funds. Is there a motion? Counselor.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the request of the transfer of the defendant's in rem in the case of State of Maine versus Brennan-Sparford pursuant to fifteen MRSA Section 5822, subsection four A, and Section 5824, subsection three, to the City of Ellsworth and to allow the Finance Director to deposit these monies into the Police Forfeiture Reserve Account upon receipt of funds.
Second. Motion in the second, discussion? All those in favor? New business, under item ten, Public Hearing in Action for Licenses. First one this evening is Louise Joy and Thomas Joy doing business as Edward Joy and Sons, One Twenty-Nine North Street, for renewal of a city junkyard automobile graveyard permit. This is a public hearing, if anyone would like to speak on this application, this is your opportunity. Seeing none, public hearing is closed.
Mr. Chairman, move approval.
Second. Motion in the second, all those in favor? Unanimous. Second item. James B. Card II doing business as Jimbo's Junkin', Sixty-two Kylie's Way, for renewal of a city junkyard automobile graveyard permit. This is a public hearing on this application? If anyone would like to speak? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Councilors.
Mr. Chairman, move approval.
Second. Motion in the second, all those in favor? And the third one, MoFo LLC doing business as The Turtle Restaurant and Bar, One Eighty-Six High Street, for a new City Class B license, amusement, liquor, and victueller, and a new state restaurant lounge, eleven malt, spirituous, and vinous liquor license. Being a new application, is there a representative of the applicant?
Yes, I'm Steve Fionder.
What's your last name, Steve?
Boss, at the office.
Thank you very much. This is a public hearing, if anyone has any comment? Seeing none, public hearing is closed.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question of the applicant.
Yes, sir.
I came off the island today, and The Turtle's pretty slow, is it going to be able to get to Ellsworth for opening day?
Try and, try as soon as we can get the other one out.
Okay. When do you expect to open?
The first, so...
Welcome to Ellsworth.
Soon as I get over this cold, hopefully I can get everybody in this week and get things going.
Good, thank you. Move approval, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Motion in the second, all those in favor? Item eleven, Public Hearing in Action on Amendments to the City of Ellsworth Code of Ordinances, Chapter Thirty-Six, General Assistance Ordinance. Thank you.
Good evening, I'm General Assistance Administrator. I'm just here to adopt my new maximums for the year, and I did include... And I did include last year's numbers so you guys could compare. There's maybe sense change difference from one year to the next. Most of them in the food maximums.
Any questions of Tina?
Just one, Mr. Chairman. And I don't want to put her on the spot, but I notice in your monthly report that you've been in contact with the mayor's center and...
Yes.
...community partners. Have you any sense on how bad a winter season this is going to be on heating numbers?
Right now WHCA, their application process, they're booking up till January currently, and it just started. So, a lot of applications, people asking for assistance for heat. I have contacted the shelter. This would be, I believe, their second or third year in a row where they do not have additional funding to help. So, it will mainly be on the general assistance program and depending on if WHCA does get donation funding for their fuel fund. I'm not sure how that will go, but they won't know probably until beginning of January how much funding they will get.
Mr. Chairman, I bring this up for one particular reason is to remind the public that we have a supply of money that is by donation that helps the less fortunate, that is run through Tina's office outside of the general assistance guidelines. So if someone slips through all those cracks but really needs something with her and the manager's discussion, we can do that. And she accepts checks made up of the City of Ellsworth Heat Fund, tax deductible, and you're helping your fellow citizens. So anybody, even those listening on the TV, phone me up some money.
I will be doing a, this year I have decided not to do the silent auction, just to give the businesses a break because I've done it for the past six years. The donations were kind of dwindling, but I am doing a new, it's called Warm Wishes. And I've got a big banner that will be set out front City Hall. And I'll have ribbons where people can come in and donate dollar minimum or whatever else they'd like to donate to make a wish. And they can tie their ribbon on the front steps out front. That should be coming soon. I'm waiting to hear back. Full circle because they donated the big banner. Very nice of them.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions, counselors?
Just a comment, Mr. Chairman. I may want to just thank the director for supplying us with so much information, especially the comparisons and looking at previous years. We haven't always had that. Very helpful.
No, thank you.
This is a public hearing.
This is a public hearing for the adoption of the general assistance maximums. If there's anyone that would like to speak, this is your opportunity. Seeing none, public hearing is closed.
Mr. Chairman?
Counselor?
Propose to resolve the approve, resolve to approve the amendments to the Ellsworth Code of Ordinances, Chapter 36, General Assistance Ordinance as presented.
Second. Motion and a second. Further discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good job.
Item 12, Council Order Number 101801, Request of the City Manager to Confirm the Appointment of the New Ellsworth Economic Development Director. Counselor Cole?
As you all know, Mickey Sumter has stepped down as Economic Development Director as of October 1st. And I want to publicly thank Mickey for her six years of service as Economic Development Director for Ellsworth. She is staying on in a part-time capacity through June and will help transition and focus on the activities at the, our incubator down on the waterfront. The HR Committee, which in this case was Steve Beatham, Mark Blanchett, and Don, Counselor Hudson, sitting in for Bob Crossway, along with the Deputy City Manager and myself, sat in on a selection committee. We solicited resumes for about two to three weeks, actually a little bit longer than that, set up interviews, and it was the unanimous recommendation of the group that we hire Jana Newman Richards to be Ellsworth Economic Development Director. She looks familiar to many of you because she worked here almost two and a half years as Assistant City Planner. I had the opportunity to work directly with Jana on different economic development presentations and analysis. I know her work well. She comes to us with a great education, great experience, and brings a lot of enthusiasm and passion to the position. She has a background in urban planning, a master's degree in urban planning, and an undergraduate degree from the Maxwell School at Syracuse focusing on geography. And in the world of economic development, it's all about geography. People look to invest because your area has certain attributes, and I can assure you that she has the kinds of keen analytical abilities as well as passion that's going to represent us well going forward. So with that, I've provided as adjusted motion to confirm the appointment of Jana Newman Richards as Economic Development Director for the City of Ellsworth. Jana is here with us tonight. Welcome, Jana, and I'd leave it to you all. She the nervous one over there?
Well, that's Lisa.
I was going to mention David. Stop putting her on a pedestal. We're not going to pay her enough.
Counselors, any questions? Comments?
Mr. Chairman, I knew Jana for the two and a half years she worked here up in the planning office. I went to a lot of the planning board meetings. It's good to see you back in City Hall and back into the family.
Anyone else? Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman?
Counselor Hudson?
I move to confirm the appointment of Jana Newman Richards as Economic Development Director for the City of Ellsworth.
Second. Motion and a second. Further discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous.
I failed to mention that Jana will begin on November 1st. Will be rejoining us, so we look forward to it very much.
Item 13, Council Order Number 101802, Request of the Finance Director for Approval to Encumber Certain Appropriation Accounts.
Good evening, Jennifer Merchant, Finance Director. This is an annual request to encumber funds from any unfinished projects. The majority of the projects are capital improvement projects. The remaining balance figures are estimates and could change after the audit. I have provided an updated list for you to review this evening.
Counselors, any questions? Ms. Merchant?
Just an overall, not any particular one, but Counselor Beatham and I were sitting there earlier talking. There are a lot of things in here with small balances of the projects completely done with.
I have to take a look, yeah.
The next go-around, if we could tighten it up a little bit in honor of Steve's departure.
Sure.
For instance, the, I'll just, the Haberdark float, it's only five grand, but it's for the main float piling replacement. We did that earlier.
Right.
So, maybe we just label that back on a general repairs instead of just piling replacement. But that's all. I'm in favor of the list. I'm just, remember we did this a few years ago? We tightened it up and took projects that were done.
Yeah, and then removed those over to the reserve accounts.
Yeah, yeah.
So, we were just waiting for the audit to close the books and then we can take a look at those capital improvement projects and ask to put those funds in the reserve accounts.
Good, thank you.
Yeah. Mention that, Mr. Chair and Counsel, that this doesn't preclude any future, at any time you can redirect those funds.
Any other comments? Is there a motion?
Mr. Chair?
Counselor?
Move to approve the request of the Finance Director to adjust the FY 2018 Estimated Appropriations and Revenues as presented.
Second.
Motion and a second. Further discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous. Item 14, Council Order Number 101803, Request of the Finance Director for Approval to Adjust the FY 2018 Estimated Appropriations and Revenues.
Move approval, Mr. Chairman?
Second.
This is the second part of that act that we do every year.
Discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous.
Thank you.
Item 15, Council Order Number 101804, Request of the Public Works Director to Award the Bid for a One-Ton Work Truck.
Good evening, councilors. Lisa Zekulich, Public Works Director. Actually, I'm going to request to reject bids for a one-ton truck on October 2nd. A bid opening was held for a one-ton truck for the Highway Department. Only one bid was received. The received bid was significantly over budget for the piece of equipment. And so at this time, I'm recommending to reject bids for this piece of equipment so that we can modify the bid specifications to bring it back into hopefully budgeted amounts and place item back out to bid.
So move, Mr. Chairman?
Second. Discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you, Lisa. Item 16, Council Order Number 101805, Authorization to Submit a Land and Water Conservation Fund Grant Application to the State of Maine in Support of the Senior Fitness Station at Nolton Park. All the financial matches will be provided from third-party organizations.
Good evening, councilors. Assistant City Planner, Steve Fuller, and I'm here presenting tonight on this request, asking for your authorization to apply for grant funding for the proposed senior fitness station. And you all have a memo on this in your packets, but just to quickly recap and for the benefit of those in the audience, the grant money we're looking to apply for is from the Land and Water Conservation Fund, or LWCF. It's a federal program with money administered at the state level for recreation offerings such as this proposed project. The proposal for the senior fitness station, which could be used by people of all ages but would be specifically designed with older adults in mind, comes from Friends in Action. FIA staff and volunteers have worked really hard to do the necessary research, fundraising, and other groundwork for this project. Joe Cooper, Executive Director of FIA, and volunteers Tom and Diane Dunn and Janice O'Brien are all here tonight in support of this. The grant application would use money that FIA has already secured from grants, other grants, private donations, and fundraisers they have done, and would be used to leverage additional funding through the LWCF program. And the program offers up to a 50% match for the total cost of a project, meaning if successful, that this grant application would allow FIA to get more bang for its buck and potentially double the amount of money that they've already raised. As noted in the memo in your packets, the proposal does not call for any city tax dollars to fund the project. The grant requirements do not allow a nonprofit such as FIA to apply for funding and require the municipality submits the application, so that's why we're here tonight seeking your authorization for this. And the proposed motion that was supplied in the memo for this agenda item comes directly from the LWCF Application Guidance Document. Application deadline is the 16th of November, and the Planning Department is working closely with Joe and Tom and Diane on that application. And that's all I have to say. I think Joe has a little additional information, and we're both available if you have any questions about the project.
Hi. Thank you very much for allowing me to speak. I am Joe Cooper, the Executive Director of Friends in Action. Friends in Action was delighted to partner with the city, both on the senior center but also to accept the planning that was required to follow up on our, the City of Ellsworth being designated as an age-friendly municipality with, by AARP. We were the second municipality in the state. There are now over 70 across the state that have been designated, and as part of that, you need to develop a plan. So we were happy to take the lead on that for the city. And as part of that work, we did a survey of the community and the outdoor activity and availability of places to exercise was one of the major things that showed up in our survey. I had learned about senior fitness, outdoor fitness equipment, and I was very interested in it, but of course, we do not have any place to put such a thing. And I approached the council about a year ago when AARP offered us a grant for us to match, which was at that time $3,500, and the council was gracious enough to say that they did at least theoretically approve the idea of having the equipment at Nolton Park. And I brought with you just to show you, just what the equipment, give you an idea of some of the equipment. I just need that back. That isn't exactly what we would end up with. It depends on what we would have money for. We've been able, through a lot of individuals, selling raffle tickets and at least one significant donation. Lot of community excitement about this. Ellsworth Rotary is also supportive of the project and has a matching grant there. It's pretty exciting, all the support that the project has, so I hope that you'll allow us to make it go even further. Thank you very much.
Joe, before you leave, I just, if I may, I want to reiterate just some concerns that I've had from the community, but I want to just put it out there very clearly, this is not taxation dollars that we're talking about.
Right.
This is permission for you to apply for a grant under the city manager, that you'll get matching funds for, but it is not coming out of the city's coffers.
That's right. We've already got the money that we've raised, yeah.
And so this is, you're looking for the city's assistance in applying for an additional grant?
Right.
Yes.
Yeah.
Counselor Moore?
Speaking on behalf of senior citizens, I look around here, see if you... I noticed in the handout that it showed some tables with chessboard.
Yes, and I passed an example of that around as well. Yeah.
I'm curious as to what you plan to put in this area for actual physical fitness?
Yeah, I've got some examples of the equipment passing around. There would be, at this point, it depends on what we end up with. As we initially planned for four pieces of equipment, if we were able to get the grant, we could have more. But we've been, we worked very hard to research the types of equipment that were available. These are samples of what we were, I've been most interested in. Two of the pieces that we're interested in would be wheelchair accessible. They, there is an overhead chest press where you could be seated or be in a wheelchair. There is a two-person, the idea is also to have this very social and fun... and fun and different, two-person cross-country ski kind of thing, a station where people can, about four people can work at doing dips, and there's some twisting. There's a couple of Tai Chi idea, Tai Chi spinners where you're moving in different ways. The idea was to target, we consulted with physical therapists and our own trainers, what would be beneficial, trying to have a number of different areas of the body that would be benefited. There's also some balanced steps. It's trying to be sort of a variety of things. When we first initially were approached with this grant, after our age-friendly work with the survey, it was a small amount of money, and the equipment, we felt we could maybe do this in more than one phase. This would allow us to do a larger variety of pieces of equipment. I hope I'm... And the tables are a very exciting part of that because it would give a place where people could gather, and at least two of the tables, if we're able to get that many, would also be wheelchair accessible.
At least a rest after working out.
Yeah, right. Exactly. Or just to socialize. I mean, socialization is one of the most important parts of all of this.
Well, I think the area where you've got designated for this is good, too, because it is right adjacent to the parking lot in case emergency vehicles need to come.
Right, exactly. And accessible from, by a wheelchair. And also, the idea of families being able to utilize the park, so it's also not that far from the children's playground.
Counselor Hamilton.
So, this isn't directed at you in terms of the merits of the proposal. It's more for the city staff, just in terms of the overall planning. Initially, it was a smaller project. It's growing, which is great. The question I have for the city is just in terms of the park itself and planning, and where is the park going? What other needs have been identified, and how is that park going to be utilized? And how does this fit into that overall plan?
Okay, would you like to answer that question?
I would prefer to David first.
First, I would add that I don't believe a nonprofit can apply for these funds. I believe you have to be a municipality.
That's correct.
So, we're basically acting as an agent, but of course, it's our property, so it all makes sense. Counsel Hamilton's question is a very good one. There are other issues within the park that, in my estimation, need to be addressed. I think it would, to make it more age-friendly, upgrading the walking trails to an asphalt or a hard surface, which would be more user-friendly for the aging. You know, makes a lot of sense. We felt that this was a good thing to go after because they had done such a good job of raising some funds. Basically, could double that towards this effort. And the Assistant Planner can speak to this more, but we had brought out the folks from the Department of Conservation.
Correct.
We brought in a group of people to look to the entire park, to figure out where it made sense to have this function, so that it wouldn't preclude something in the future, you know, a future priority. So, there has been a great deal of thought going into it, but there are other needs down the road. In this case, we're looking at something that's going to raise its own match, to get it up and going. Obviously, we would have ongoing maintenance responsibilities. Oh, nothing onerous, for sure.
Correct.
Steve?
I would just add on to what David said, you know, to the point of planning for the park. We did consult with Sam Copeland, a landscape architect, and Andrew McCullough, an engineer. Andrew's been involved with the park for a number of years now with an eye to where it would be situated and so that it wasn't displaced haphazardly. And with a view of trying to group similar areas, active areas, the playground, this fitness station, preserving the amphitheater. So, it was done with a view towards the whole park, if that helps.
And I think it's in a location that's not going to preclude, you know, any major activity in the future. In fact, its footprint is pretty modest in the big scheme of things. We have, I think, approximately five acres out there. I think the location that's been targeted is in proximity to the support services, the home, Leonard Lake Housing.
Yeah, the senior housing. There's assisted living. There's several people there that are in power chairs. We have a folder full of, I think about thirty letters at this point, from community members, physicians, and so on, several members of housing, and from the assisted living. I'm very excited that this would be available to them.
Counselor Hudson.
Is this going to be on an impervious surface? Are you going to use, keep it a green space surface?
I'd say we're still looking at that, consulting with the manufacturer to determine the best type. Some of the pieces, like the ADA pieces, may need a hard cement-type surface.
So, is the concern for the space, that a certain percentage of what we have there has to remain green space and cannot be impervious space?
Correct. And so, if there are pieces that, you know, do not need a hard surface underneath them, then we would look to...
Yeah, they can have their own foundations.
Soft landing, too.
Right. Yes.
It's not asphalt.
True, true. But for a wheelchair, you'd like a hard surface.
Chair, if I could ask the Assistant Planner just to point out where in Nolton Park this would be going?
Yeah, it, the counselors have a...
Sorry.
Have a visual in front of them, but for those who don't have that, it's basically stretching along the walking trail. It's just north of the pavilion in the center of the park.
Yeah.
Counselor Fordio.
Mr. Chairman, I echo Dawn's concern because that whole green space park was a trade-off for our wastewater treatment plant, impervious surfaces. We've been told, when we wanted to do some of the ice rink, that no, you can't do that because that's part of that trade with DEP, so you might want to research the percentage of impervious surface that were allowed, because I'm not sure we can pave the walkways. I think that's one of the reasons we went to the, crushed us, was wanting to go through it, so...
So, just before they buy their equipment, it might be good to find out how much you can...
Well, you can do it either way. We've already done a lot of research on that, and I think it really depends on exactly this kind of consideration, and we only, it also will depend on the amount of equipment we're able to purchase. We'd like at least one to be a wheelchair ADA piece of equipment. So, I would think that, you know, this is right near one of the trails, and you could, and the parking lot. I think there's ways that you could not have a huge footprint of concrete. At one point, we did look at, maybe the whole thing should be, but that, even that would affect a huge amount of space.
And I'm in complete support of the project. I just don't want the city to get in trouble with DEP by going beyond our agreement.
We won't let that happen, Counselor. The other thing I would mention, we're in the concept stage now with the, it's Department of Conservation. If we're chosen to go to the next stage, then that next level of due diligence will be done to figure out how to best engineer this, how to best place it, and to make sure. My recollection of it, though, is that the DEP, the area that was set aside as green space, is not the entire five acres, although where the hockey rink is, is right in the center of the piece that was set aside. And again, this is from memory, but I think it was...
Don't trust the memory. It slipped us at our age.
Right. But it wasn't, let's just say it wasn't the entire five acres. So, I do think we have, I, this is such a minimal part of the entire thing. I believe we can work around it, and I'm sure that we could work with the DEP, you know, such a worthy cause if we had to.
Any other comments or questions? Counselor Beetham?
When we first got the plan back for Nolton Park, my first comment was, you're trying to put a quart in a punch bottle. And again, I see more and more being moved into this park all the time. I just think that you need to be aware that you need to keep open spaces and think long and hard before you put things in places that limit our ability to use the open spaces. I'm not against this project, mainly because I might be one of the people that might benefit for it, so...
I hope so.
But I just caution the city planner and city staff that, you know, the more we put in it, the less opportunity we have for open spaces.
Bigger the garage, the more stuff you can put in it, Steve.
I know.
For myself, I would completely agree with you, because that's one of the things that excited me about this grant, would be rather doing bit by bit. This would be, at least, you'd have the entire thing in one, you know, you know what it's going to look like.
The planet in one move.
Exactly, exactly. And the placement of the tables could be configured, I think, where there's already some area that's being used for that.
And what's the footprint of this area that we would be committing to, roughly, square footage-wise?
I believe originally, we're looking at a thirty by forty-five, so thirteen, fourteen-hundred square feet. The area that's marked on your memo there is larger than that. It wouldn't require that full amount of space, but that's just a general area.
To put it in perspective, the five acre plus acres, what is it, forty-four thousand square feet an acre? That's what, almost a quarter of a million square feet. And we're talking how much here? Fourteen hundred? So, we're, this is not, you know, going to tax the park. We don't want to put it in a location, obviously, that creates a bottleneck or whatever, but I think that the parties involved have looked at it pretty carefully.
Right. And actually, the man from the state that we met with and looked over the site did talk about how it's really more useful to have pieces of exercise equipment more grouped together. Used to be a thought of having things sort of spread out along the rail, but now that, you know, and so that also would keep it from being all over the place.
Any other comments? Is there a motion?
I move the motion as written.
Second. Discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm just going to get my...
And Counselor Moore, the game table is not a roulette, there's not a roulette wheel on there. It's checkerboards.
Oh, I didn't have my glasses on.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Item seventeen, discussion in action on Council Order Number 101806, request to approve an agreement between the city of Ellsworth and Northern Light Medical Transport, formerly known as Capital Ambulance, to provide short-term quarters at the Ellsworth Fire Department to facilitate the startup of an ambulance service in Ellsworth.
Mr. Chair, Joe Kellner from Northern Light is here tonight to discuss their proposal, which you received in your packet, along with their presentation. Last week, the committee looking at EMS issue met to go over this and met with Mr. Kellner and other staff, and much of what was discussed, I think he's going to lay out tonight. You have their proposed shared youth facility agreement, and they are prepared tonight to address any questions you may have. I do want to make it clear that the council, back in August, provided direction on going forward with a series of workshops to look at training needs for upgrading the skills within the fire department and for first responders, and also looking at the overall future of EMS services in Ellsworth and the role of the city. Nothing has changed in that. What has changed, though, is that Mr. Kellner approached me back two or three weeks ago now. They had been looking for space, and they had some communities that didn't go forward with the service that they were expecting to, that had been part of County Ambulance Service area. And for whatever reasons, they were looking for a temporary situation to come in for nine months to give them time to sort out what their long-term facility needs should be. And, you know, obviously, this is of critical importance to the city, that this fledgling service get up and going, and I thought it'd be important to bring it before the council tonight to hear their proposals. So, Mr. Kellner?
Thank you all. Thanks for having me. My name's Joe Kellner. I oversee EMS services throughout Northern Light Health now. Still getting used to saying that. One of the agencies is Northern Light Medical Transport, which is formerly Capital Ambulance. So, Northern Light Medical Transport's a 501(c)(3) charitable organization, technically formed on October 1st. Prior to that, starting in eighteen, excuse me, nineteen eighty-nine, the ambulance service was Capital Ambulance operating out of the Vancouver area. So, as I think you know, we started service down here on August 31st at 5:00 PM with a closing of county ambulance, and began serving the entire coverage area of county. I did put together a fairly lengthy presentation. My assumption was that you probably didn't want me to do a forty-five-minute presentation to the council tonight, so if that's in the packet and available for the public, I can certainly go over any part of that you want tonight, once we get to that point. So, our request tonight is for the council to consider, essentially, a pilot, to try and see what it's like to house the ambulance service in the same quarters as the fire department. Our recommendation is to look at a nine-month pilot. That's how the agreement is written, the draft agreement that you have for your review. The idea would be cohabitation, the ambulance and the fire department along with personnel. What this wouldn't include is any shared staffing or anything like that, so, you know, the fire department is not expected to routinely drive the ambulance. Likewise, our folks wouldn't be doing any firefighting, although we could do things like assisting on fire scenes with rehabilitation activities, water bottle changes, things like that, if that was desired. We can also offer the fire department certain medical training. We certainly can't do a full EMT class or EMR class, but we can do, you know, continuing education, things like that. One of the things that became somewhat clear as we really came into this venture, which I think, as you remember, there wasn't a whole lot of notice for, is that any lease agreement that we sign would require some substantial build-out modification of any facility. And we looked at several. We looked at several options, both inside Ellsworth and outside. And the lease terms that we're looking at is three to five years, if we were to sign a lease term, at a fairly substantial lease rate, not unexpected, but substantial. So, one of the things that I've heard is, I've been here, and I hope you've heard the same, is the desire to take time and evaluate this in a structured manner. I've heard the idea of holding public work sessions, which I think is a great idea. One of the additional downfalls on top of what I have in my presentation that I would see to signing a lease today, is it somewhat precludes that, somewhat precludes, at least for a long period of time, us looking at partnership opportunities, seriously, with the fire department and the city of Ellsworth to ensure the response is best. So, again, the request tonight is consideration to the council for a nine-month pilot, where we would house our two ambulances for crew members at any given time with your fire department staff. And the way we structured this is to have zero financial impact on the city, and I'm sure the city manager, deputy city manager, could speak to that much more articulately than I could, but we came up with what we thought was a reasonable approach to ensuring this is cost-neutral for the city. What we would do is, we would pay directly for any upgrades or modifications of the fire department, which at this point appear minor. Some of the items that would require our financial assistance would be things like a, an oil coolant heater, can I get that right, for the pickup truck, a cover for the bow, which would be displaced by the ambulances. Other things would be a small electrical modification, adding an electrical drop. What we discussed in the end is temporary partitions, essentially, heavy-duty curtains to separate the living spaces versus building walls and things like that, so the impact being relatively non-substantial. I think that, you know, if we were able to consider this, it really does give us time to sit down and look at what the best future for EMS in the city is. The other thing it allows us to do, I put a whole bunch of financial information in the packet for you. My commitment to you, by the way, is always to be transparent, especially as a nonprofit organization. Now, I can, I will and I can share with you any information or data you want, for an open book, and we commit to that the whole time. It also allows us time to see what the actual revenue is, if the actual revenue matches our projections. Obviously, as I put forth in the proposal, there are some financial concerns with the service going forward. This is not a lucrative business to be in. Five, ten years ago, the ambulance business was a good business to be in. It's not anymore. I had a selectman in another community ask, I said, you know, if, why don't you just raise your rates and charge more? The answer is, we can't. So, if you look at that, and this is a piece that, you know, I think is difficult for folks who don't necessarily understand healthcare billing and finance to fully grasp, but we could bill whatever we wanted for an ambulance run. Most of our payer class is Medicare or Medicare. If we bill, just to say something completely crazy, if we bill a million dollars per ambulance call, Medicare is still going to pay us seven dollars and twenty-seven cents a mile, plus the three hundred dollar in charge. the three hundred dollar change base rate, that doesn't change. So we're somewhat held hostage a bit by government payers. I think to be quite frank and quite honest, and I've said this in other settings, I think it's very unfortunate that ambulance services, and this is not uncommon, by the way, have to rely on the towns and cities that they serve for support to be able to provide the service. It's becoming more and more prevalent as payment is not going up, costs are, as with any operation. I think it's unfortunate. We lobby regularly with the state legislature about Medicaid reimbursement, which is about forty percent of our costs. We lobby nationally for Medicare reimbursement, which is about eighty-five percent of our costs. And I'm not saying our cost is in Northern Light Medical Transport, that's across the state of Maine, by the way. So I share that with you, just to provide some context for the financial piece of this. But ultimately, I think what you'll find, as we've had substantial success in other communities with fire department partnerships and community partnerships, I'm hoping that we find the same thing here. But this gives us a period of time to test it, test the waters, see how it goes. I think I'll leave it there. I'll take any and as many questions as folks have, I'm sure there are some, and we can hold from there.
Counselors?
Mr. Chair, I'd add that the fire chief is here tonight and can address any issues in terms of capital improvements necessary to facilitate this move, and the deputy city manager has looked at the numbers and what the incremental cost would be to the city as well.
Councilor Moore?
Well, I've read through this information, and I've been in the groups that have discussed it a number of times, and it is a request for a temporary thing. We are faced as a city with the need for ambulance service, or a city that's growing in population. It's an opportunity for us to learn something, as well as for the ambulance company to learn something. So I support this.
Thank you. Counselor Hamilton?
So in terms of asking for feedback from residents, I think there's overwhelming support in terms of having ambulance service available, and that certainly was a concern with the closing of the previous provider. At the same time, as we started, certainly, in the council, having discussions and talking about long-term planning, there's also questions about the planning process and how this fits in. So some of my questions are intended to kind of walk through both sides of it, to give the public that opportunity to hear what this really is about in terms of how it relates to our previous discussion, long-term planning versus the short-term issue. I guess the first question I have, just in terms of your need for a definitive plan, what is your timeline that you need a response from the city in order to feel comfortable in terms of your operations? Is that today? Is that two weeks? Is it a month? What's your timeframe?
Sure. As far as timeline for the temporary arrangement, sooner is better. You know, optimally, we come to conclusion tonight. The challenge that we have is the ambulances are outside. It's not the end of the world. We have temporary heaters in them, but once it starts to snow and ice, we then face some response time issues. So sooner is better. Long-term, I think by spring we come up with a multi-year plan. That would be what I would think would be a good target, but it gives us some time to do it in a meaningful way.
You've got more? Go for it.
Keep them coming, Dale.
So in terms of the information that you presented, it looks like about forty-four percent of the net revenue comes from the city of Ellsworth in terms of the data that you had presented. Is that fairly accurate in terms of that? So the volume of calls is pretty significant. I'm assuming that was, that wasn't related to just the hospital and transports? Was that related to calls in the city?
Correct. So the hospital subsidizes the operation to a degree. Let me rephrase that. It's not the hospital that's subsidizing, it's the patients being transported out of the hospital. And that's about nine hundred ninety-three thousand in the revenue, so a little under half. As far as the total nine-one-one volume, you're correct. Ellsworth is just under half, roughly, about a thousand, a thousand fifty-four, I think, in the last full year billable transports out of Ellsworth.
Very significant in terms of the volume and the need as we look going forward around.
Sure.
Then I guess the last thing, then I'll hold it there, is just, over this planning period, what, obviously with the reimbursement being what it is, it's, the reimbursement isn't the issue in terms of break even, it's the volume.
Yep.
Volume is the driver in terms of getting to a place where that works. And I know your model includes assessments to communities, but also wondering, do you have plans in terms of conversations with other providers to look at economies of scale to make the service more affordable for communities, more accessible for communities? Or are you looking over this period of time just at one sole relationship with the city of Ellsworth?
So there are a number of things that I want to look at and plan to look at. Obviously, the other ambulance services have desire to expand as well to help cover fixed costs. It's a high fixed cost operation, which, you know, kind of explains PAC's expansion to the rest of Surrey. Ultimately, we'd like to work together. As you say, there are economies of scale. We see from a state level, fewer and fewer ambulance services in general servicing. That's a reality. We get approached very regularly by communities that need help. So what the long-term situation is, I don't know. The other thing that we want to really look at is, this is, it's a bit philosophical in nature admittedly, but looking at the cost of healthcare. So if I wave an example, I ran some reports. I looked, about eight to nine percent of our calls in Ellsworth since we've been here has been for the same address, the same patient, which is a non-billable service. So there are ways we can look to manage that. We're working on programs right now as an organization in this concept of community paramedicine, managing population health, and really trying to decrease the cost of care. As you, if you can reduce the amount of non-billable care that's given, you can focus efforts other places. Using the community paramedicine model in Hancock County, I think there's opportunity, in fact, I know there's opportunity, from payers who have become interested in looking at reducing readmission rates and things like that. So there's other reimbursement opportunities, and just, again, sorry to be a little philosophical with this whole thing, but that's really where I see this going, is that we're working with payers to try and prevent trips to the hospital, and that augments the revenue. Payers are very interested in that.
I don't think it'd come to anybody's surprise that I support this whole habitually. I think this is akin to moving in with your girlfriend to make sure it's gonna work before you get married. Back in Steve and I day, you never did that, but that's the norm now. We can learn on both sides. We can see if it's compatible. We can see whether it's disruptive on the fire service, to listen to them leave at two o'clock in the morning, do you get back to sleep? I think it's a great pilot program to see how we work together. And having the two trucks in our station knows that we have a little bit of knowledge as to how busy they are, and I'm in hopes that the next step in this, after we have our public meetings and talk about it, is an agreement that our Ellsworth Fire Service will go one or two levels higher in their training, and then they'll be able, it's public knowledge. I think last week we had two or three early morning assists, did a CPI call. We can work better and more efficient together. When you send an ambulance and an engine, they've got backup, they've got someone that knows their rig, that knows, okay, this is a CPI call, this is what they're gonna need next, and get it to the patient so that the paramedics can work on the patient. I just foresee this becoming an incredible partnership for the benefit of our taxpayers. And remember, all the outlawing communities that Northern Light is servicing are paying about nine dollars a head per capita. Ellsworth isn't gonna have that. We're gonna allow them to live in our, in our house and pay their way. So I think that's a, well, eight thousand people, that's seventy-two thousand dollars a year we're saving. Or maybe we go out on our own and spend six hundred thousand dollars and start an ambulance service of our own. I think it's a great, great opportunity.
And if I recall, the agreement they have with other outlawing towns is a three percent bump per year, above that nine dollars.
That's correct.
The one thing that hasn't been discussed is the fact that we are gonna continue to look at the ambulance service. We're gonna continue to have meetings and public meetings to try to get as much information from the public, from the department, from the ambulance service as we possibly can to make sure that whatever Ellsworth does in the future is the best thing for Ellsworth as well as the ambulance service. This trial period may be what allows us to work out agreements in the future which benefit both sides to the maximum amount. And I think that if we did not do this, it would be an opportunity missed. I said before, you've got to be cautious and take your time and do it, but what this does is, it actually buys us that time to look at things. So I'm going to be in favor of this tonight.
And just to add to that comment, Steve, the first EMS workshop is Monday, November twenty-sixth.
You won't be here anymore.
You'll be fishing, I'm sure.
Citizen Beatham certainly could be there, though.
What are your chances?
Do you have a comment?
I just wanted to reiterate, this is not a final decision on the city's part. I think everyone's sort of, just to drive that point home, this is a temporary stopgap, so we have ambulance service, and Northern Light has a place to work out of because currently that's your struggle. And it gives us time to not only feel our way through the relationship and see what it's like for our guys in the firehouse and for the ambulance service as well, to make sure it's a good fit before you commit or we commit, but I think it is a, sort of the best of both worlds. We could have a trial run without. My only other question is, in your proposal, you listed three scenarios. Are those three permanent scenarios moving forward? Are those three scenarios for this temporary, three proposals? Are the three proposals for our temporary situation?
I think we chose option two.
Yeah.
We chose option two?
The subcommittee did. That's what we recommended coming forward.
Right, but tonight are we deciding on a proposal? I mean, the subcommittee doesn't decide that, do they?
No. It's in their, it's in their proposal on option two. So what they are proposing to us is option two.
Option two.
And tonight would be an approval for a framework to have the city manager work on...
Move forward with discussions with Northern Light?
Yes.
And do legal review. Make sure our insurance provider is satisfied that we're properly covered, there's no additional coverage needed, those kinds of things. We could bring this back, given the timeframe involved. I'm assuming this needs to move relatively quickly, but at least I think you need to know if there's a, in principle, the willingness on the council's part to move forward and work out the details.
Yeah, I'd ask you to bring it back to a Friday morning special meeting to get this going.
Yeah.
We can't wait till our next council meeting.
Yeah, and there are some other special meetings coming up, I believe. I defer to the city clerk and deputy city manager, but I believe we're gonna have some special meetings, certainly the organizational meeting and November ninth.
Right, that's true.
Or if not sooner, but we need time to work those things through.
So I guess I just want to make a comment, just in terms of, I know, and it's been explained well, in terms of the circumstances led up to this request for this council meeting, but I think it's important to reiterate and acknowledge the fact that there certainly is an appearance that, as a council, we talked about having a planning process, including the community in those discussions, and then the next meeting, we come forward with a short-term plan to create a partnership. And that's what it is in terms of the arrangements. So I just think it's important to acknowledge that, to put that on the table. At the same time, I think there's a real issue in terms of ensuring that there is access to an ambulance service. We need to have that in this community. And so for me, the issue is very much two separate processes that voting to agree to this is simply, in my mind, the opportunity to ensure that we have EMS services available now. It in no way has anything to do with future planning. When we talk about whether, how much the city would be saving on this per capita, my response would be that when the city of Ellsworth is forty-four percent of the revenue, it really is more of a partnership than it is, I don't think the city wants to get into, and I don't think the community wants to pay for other communities. And I think that kind of assessment would be exactly what we would be doing. So I think going forward, a totally different discussion, where this ends up, separate discussion, and we absolutely need to rely on that public forum to do the planning, to say, where is this going to look like long-term? Where are we going? So I just want to go on record that I see this two very separate issues, and for me, it's a matter of making sure that we have EMS services now, and that the future is yet to be decided of what this looks like.
Thank you.
Might add, Mr. Chair, reporter Koff attended the committee meeting last week, and that was very much stressed, that this is a parallel track and that nothing has changed from August in terms of the council's directive to go forward, workshop it, work it through the public and such, and I think it was reflected in the coverage in the Ellsworth American, so...
Except for the headline.
Well, yeah.
Doesn't make sense.
Kate does not pick the headline.
And as an aside, Counselor Fordyall?
Yes, sir.
I kind of chuckled when you said that this is kind of like a boyfriend-girlfriend moving in, and I came across my mind that this is also a nine-month agreement. Just saying. Moving on.
Mr. Chairman?
We've been voting this before we get into...
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I would move to approve agreement between the city of Ellsworth and Northern Light Medical Transport to provide short-term quarters, Ellsworth Fire Department, to facilitate the startup of an ambulance service in Ellsworth as presented.
Second. Motion and a second. Further discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion passes?
Crossway.
Six to one. Mr. Crossway opposed.
Correct. Thank you all very much. Appreciate it.
And Mr. Chairman, part of that motion should have been to authorize the city manager to proceed with due diligence, if the second would accept that.
Yes.
He's gonna do it anyway, but...
That's it on the regular agenda. One item, one last item that is not on the agenda, is this is Counselor Beatham's and Counselor Crossway's last regular meeting, and I just want to give them publicly a very deep thank you for their service from me. I have learned a lot. They have both taught me, tried to teach me, when to speak and when to shut up. And I want...
And I wanna thank them for that, and their guidance in the five-plus years that I've been on the council. Thank you, gentlemen.
I'd also echo that to a certain degree, I think they've both served as mentors over the years, they both have some very, very important knowledge, skills, that have been essential in the running of this city, and we're definitely gonna miss having them here. They've been wonderful assets. And as Steve puts on his hat, I can picture him riding off into the sunset in his canoe, fishing. Bob won't be there, he'll be playing hockey.
You know, Mr. Fordyall.
For the last few years, a lot of you know, Steve and I get here about quarter past six, six-thirty, and we sit, a little left of center, a little right of center, and, uh, some of the best conversations that, that I've enjoyed with Mr. Beatham, and I will miss him as a season. And he's taught all of us a little, some of us learned, some of us didn't.
You've been hit the side of the head with a hake?
No. No, I, I don't use hake, it's, usually, it's, usually it's a mackerel, a little smaller, and they sting more.
Dale.
Um, I'm just wondering what's gonna happen to the roads when you're gone, but, uh, I, you know, one of the things, I've, I've only been here for a year, I, I knew a lot more before I got on the council than, uh, once I got on the council, and I realized what I didn't know. Um, and, and the two of you, in terms of the years of service that you've given to the city, uh, it really is commendable, um, it's, uh, like, the hours that you've put in, um, over those years to help the city, to benefit the silly, city, to facilitate discussions, to provide leadership, um, it, you know, people, they're never gonna agree with every position you take, and the, all the, when you think about all the positions you've taken over many, many, many years, um, and sticking with it and, and providing that, um, you know, the city just needs to, to recognize and to be able to say thank you, because it's a, it's a tough thing to do and to spend as many years as that both of you have, um, is, is important, and you've made an impact, so thank you for that.
And I'm just wondering if it's me.
Yes.
I choose heat names.
Don't take it personally.
I miss you both very, very much. Kinda mad at you still.
The one thing I would like to thank is, I would like to thank city staff, I think they're doing a tremendous job. I've worked with seven managers, and each one is different.
This one's very different, right?
But the, but the, the city staff has been a rock the whole time. Thank you.
Yeah, I kept one of those managers an extra few months, just for you.
Yeah, I know.
Thank you, Bob.
Still thinking.
Now I wanna thank everybody that's had a, had a part in, in the time that I've been here. We were just reviewing some things the other day, a couple of us, and, uh, my wife and I was, we're, we're talking about how many years and how many hours and we had to, to, to spend together, and that we would've had more time if it hadn't been for this, but we wouldn't have given it up, uh, for anything. And, yeah, I was reminded that, um, I, I've had five terms on city council, yeah, three times I've been the chairman, the mayor, and I also, in the midst of that, had three terms in the state legislature, acted as the, uh, minority whip for one term, and I thought that was pretty good, having only been a U.S. citizen for twenty-seven years, and, um, I think I've paid my dues, so I'm gonna stay another few years, if you don't mind, and, um, see how you all do. Thanks, everybody, for, uh, the, uh, the help that you've been and, uh, the cooperation that I've received, it's been, it's been great. Thank you, Bob.
Mr. Chairman, I move to adjourn.
Second. All those in favor? Unanimous.
I...
(inaudible).